All right, I've got five o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order for the special call meeting September 5th, 2024 at five o'clock. I want to ask Brother Coleman for a lead of a word of prayer.
Well, Fatherhead, it's Father God. We just want to thank you today. We thank you for this afternoon, coming together and meeting, Lord. As we come together, we ask you to be in the midst as we discuss this meeting. Be on one accord today. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen. For heart, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brother David. Tara, do you have anything right now or you want to wait for later? Okay, thank you. In old business, Resolution 24-05, the Grant Assistance Agreement Authority. That needs to be on a motion, God.
Yes, I tell them.
I need a motion to accept that resolution.
Make motion accepted.
I have a first by Mary Bell, second by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. All right, thank you. Before we start this next item of business in the special call meeting, this is going to be discussion only for the matter of the zoning business districts and sign regulations. I will say that we're going to give everybody five minutes for any topics that they want to discuss at this time. And the council will have questions as well. And this is just going to be a discussion base. No action cannot be taken tonight due to the fact of a motion that reflected on the October meeting, so there's no action that can be taken tonight. So this is just discussion piece. We're going to hear everything out. And basically, I think everybody's aware of the zoning ordinances. Does any of the council have anything to start this out with in discussion piece?
Mayor, if I might clarify about something that came up last meeting that I talked with Lisa about earlier and I went back through my records. On Exhibit B, there were the question about why some items were scratched out, struck through. And Nancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what had happened is when we had finalized this and she sent it to me, there were some things that she had marked through that she said needed to be changed to reflect what our community did. And that was on me. Instead of taking those out, I had included them because she had done them. So those marks that you see on there, it wasn't anything done. It was just because Nancy had marked those so they comply with our existing regulations.
What marks and what version?
On the version that's impacted.
I'm sorry.
And B?
In the package.
And Exhibit B.
That's the only thing that we're looking at.
Well, too, also, when we had participated.
I'm sorry. You gotta speak up, Nancy.
I can't hear you. When my board approved it for me to bring it to the cities before that, then they'll know sort of that I would work with Karen with her chair. And if we saw things that didn't look exactly right before anybody personally more than that, we would correct them, look at them, and set them again. So that's all of it about the signs and stuff. It's confusing to me, but I can't change it, so.
But she had emailed it to me with those particular things. And instead of double checking that before, I sent it to Lisa. I had printed it out and sent it to Lisa because it had already been drafted. And I didn't realize those changes had been made. So that, I hopefully, explains some of those strike through comments.
Does anybody in the body have anything to say on this matter that they want to bring up for discussion? This is open forum for discussions. And if anybody wants to speak up, you can do so. This is what this is for.
I'll speak up. I will say that.
I'm not hearing.
If you don't, I'm sorry. If you don't mind projecting, it is hard to hear up here.
Sure. We can hear. I'm Shelley Schaus, and I'm the CEO of Ohio County Healthcare. And I understand that if the medical facilities piece is in that B3 zoning area, that means Owensboro Health can build here. And I respect whatever decisions made. I am concerned that's not in the best interest of Ohio County because this is a county-owned hospital. It's different like between like another restaurant coming in because the citizens here, they have a piece of this county-owned hospital. And my concern is that, say Owensboro Health builds a healthplex, as they said in their literature, it's, you know, the same services we already offer well here. And there's a, I think we all know, especially in healthcare after the pandemic, there's not enough healthcare workers. We tend to be spread thin. And my concern is that without having enough employees that are dedicated to healthcare to take care of these patients, it's going to spread resources even thinner. And really, the business from Owensboro County will just go to Owensboro Health or Davis County that we could keep and serve here and take well care of. Now, if we could collaborate with Owensboro Health, I would prefer that. Unfortunately, that's not what has happened in the past. But if they were to build a dialysis unit here, that would be terrific. That's not something that we offer. But to duplicate services is not in best interest. When I've talked to our legal counsel, they said, you know, the city council can do whatever they want to with the articles of the zoning. If they want to say, you know, we want anything here but medical facility, that you can do that. And which would be fine. That would affect us too. So it'd be in general. But especially in that B3 area, if that addition of medical facilities is put in there, then Owensboro could build a healthplex. That really, in my opinion, based upon how the facts have been shared with me, is not in the best interest of truly anybody, not even Owensboro Health. I know that there have been threats against our organization saying, you'll build a healthplex, we're going to, you know, show you a lesson. And I don't think that this is being done with good intentions. So I just felt like you needed to know. And I would want to know if I was in your position. And I want to say too, I don't want to come here, you know, putting you in a bad situation. I just want to let you know what I've been learning. And if you have questions that I can go back to my legal counsel and ask, I will be glad to do so. And like I said, you know, we appreciate you, what you do, and we respect that you're in a precarious situation. But I felt like I have a duty, you know, as the CEO of my organization, to let you know what's going on.
All right.
And feel free to contact me, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss? Yes, sir.
Hi. Good afternoon, members of the council and council to the council. My name is John Baker. I was at last city council meeting. And I just want to speak on behalf of Owensboro Health, who I do represent, but more in a matter of land use context. You know, you were looking at proposed zoning text amendments to your existing zoning regulations. And when you look at those zoning text amendments, you also have to look at them in concert with your conference plan that's been on the books for many years now. And in that comprehensive plan, it does speak to providing additional opportunities for medical facilities. It also specifically calls out attracting new medical providers, new specialists to Ohio County. And we spoke at the planning commission, and Nancy was very generous there with her time and her explanations. And she brought out both zoning maps of Beaver Dam and of Hartford. And we looked at the B2 zones versus the B3 zones and how little B2 zoning there is in both communities. In contrast to B3 zoning, which do hug the corridors, the main corridors of both communities. So, you know, I'm just here speaking that, in my opinion, I believe what the planning commission was looking at, and it wasn't just medical uses. They were looking at a bevy of land uses, as you've seen in the proposed amendments. And, you know, sometimes with zoning, like as I spoke to you last time, you've got to keep amending your zoning code because new uses come up. Technology changes. And sometimes your old qualifiers for what land uses are don't sufficiently describe what these new land uses are. And that can also be the case with medical services. So I think this is a part of the planning commission really looking at the code, looking at the voids that currently exist in those codes and are trying to fix that. And this is what their recommendation to the city councils, both Beaver Dam and Hartford, were. And I think they really did a good comprehensive job at looking at that. And it's also done appropriately within the context of looking at the comprehensive plan and saying, how can we change these zoning regulations to honor those goals that we already stated in our comprehensive plan that are not necessarily being carried forward by our actual zoning regulations? And a main component of that was opening up B3 to more uses than are existing in there today. And then one last comment I would like to make, too, that I have not seen a proposed change on, that I think both city councils should kind of consider to potentially remedy some confusion. In the B3 at the top, it says any B2 uses. You might want to consider saying any permitted B2 uses because just saying any B2 uses might be confusing to the reader to say, oh, that means any use in the B2, whether it's permitted or conditional. All of those uses can go into the B3. Because a lot of these zoning districts are hierarchical in that what's allowed in the lesser intense zone is often allowed in the more intense zone. So what's happening in B2 can happen in B3 plus additionally uses. So when it says any B2 use, you might want to discuss, should we change that or put a modifier in there just to say any permitted B2 use? That could help some confusion for the reader to forward to.
Do you have a specific page you want to refer to?
Page 500, Exhibit B. 673A, 1A. And that is a good touch, John, that I appreciate because actually I think that's caused confusion in the past.
Well, anything you have there should be written together. And I mean the permitted and the conditional. Maybe you should write it out that way because otherwise we're stopping ourselves from making it some things in there.
Obvious.
No.
And.
No conditional.
Well, I think what he's pointing to though is the same problem we've had in the past. But we have an exhaustive list up until this year. You're limited to that. So we need to say what are permitted. And then we have that extra conditional exhaustive list, and that's going to prevent the confusion.
And then to add on to what Tara's saying, too, in Kara's Chapter 100, which is the state statute chapter that talks about land use and planting, it specifically says under conditional use permit, for a conditional use permit to be available in a particular zone, it has to be listed as a conditional use in that zone. So that also, I think, is part of the confusion here. That simple correction would help. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you again for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It does state also on those, when you go to one, that like, you know, like businesses, those also through me, because you're a person taking care of all of it, needs to try to find out what's singular or what is going in. But it's not me because you don't want to hold up something to come in and. But it does state that, both places.
Thank you.
It's in singular, like, you know.
I have a question. What, could I have a timeline on what first brought this to zoning? How long this has been in the works? How long this has been discussed? Kind of when it started transpiring? And how that, what's the?
Well, we got to have training first.
You know, we've talked about a text amendment since the comprehensive plan originally happened pre-COVID. And.
When did you say?
Before COVID, we've discussed making significant text amendments. And.
In relation to?
Everything you're saying.
Everything.
Yeah. The bulk of the text amendments, we discussed with the comprehensive plan. There were some meetings to adopt the comprehensive plan that we had worked with Brad. If you all remember, the council had approved to pay for some of that at the constant. And then after that, we knew that we would have to adopt and amend certain text amendments to comply with the new comprehensive plan. So those have been kind of in the works, but Nancy had not been able to get her board trained, I think, since COVID.
Was the thing, one, when we did the comprehensive plan, too?
No, no, no. I'm saying that after the comprehensive plan, we had talked about updating the text amendments. But then she couldn't, we couldn't do anything until everyone got trained. I know that Owensboro Health had applied for something. And originally Nancy was going to treat it as a conditional use because of the existing zoning ordinance. She was interpreting that, oh, it can go here because it could be a conditional use in B2. When I was questioned about it, I looked at the ordinance and I advised Nancy because I also, I also act as council of planning and zoning. And I told her I didn't, I didn't think her interpretation of the ordinance was technically correct. So we sought additional guidance. And it was determined that that was incorrect, that because there was so many different uses for a B2 versus a B3, if it hadn't been spelled out specifically in a B3, she couldn't use it as a conditional use. When she had, and you'll notice there are clinics up and down B3 zoning, especially in Owensboro, I mean in Beaver Dam, that she had approved under a conditional use. And it wasn't her fault. She just, that was how she interpreted. And that goes back to how John was saying, to keep those interpretations from arising in the future, that would be mistaken. So when they came with their, with their conditional use, she was actually in the process of treating it as a conditional use permit. When I said, oh, hold up, I said, that's the problem. Which then, at that time, she had already scheduled a training through Mr. Mercer. And so when we said, we need training on this, when you do text amendments, we also have this, and we explained the missing interpretation of how that would be applied, he took it upon himself to draft the text amendments that we needed to adopt. So that's been over the past six to eight months?
Somewhere between.
A little bit longer than that, hasn't it?
Yeah, at least, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, before Christmas, I think we were working on it.
Yeah, it was before Christmas. Yeah.
No, I mean, it's, and the text amendments have been in the works, the discussion of doing text amendments since the comprehensive plan, the new one was adopted.
Some of the terms that needed adjusting, that's what I was trying to do, was say, you've got a, you've got a word here, and someone else could interpret that word to mean something else. And so I didn't want that anymore because that's really hard to mean. So I'm trying to get everything exactly what it is, you know. And as far as the conditional use, sometimes I've had to use a conditional use, something that I felt like everyone might want to have something to say about so it couldn't be later said that nobody told anybody. And I think, you know, that was more my part. I've done that different times because I wanted everyone to have an opportunity. Not, not to say that they could legally change it, but that they could voice their opinions. And because if it was correct for it to be there, they could ask that to put events out. They could ask that you move, you know, buildings or something like that, you know, different, take it away more from a residential district. They can make those requests, and I can work with pursue and try to get that done. So, but this one, I guess it just needs to be permitted. I didn't look at it that people forward. But we have permitted them. And then we've had them come in without a permit if they're in an existing, if there's a building there that's existing. That's what makes it so unfair. There's a building there that's existing and you want some, well, I don't, I guess you could say, I don't know, somebody getting tattoos or something there. And there's been services there for the public, then they can go in without it. It doesn't matter. Only matters when they have to get signed. So that's happened in a lot of places, the dentists, the doctors. So it's just not right that they can, if you take it over to an existing building, you can take in and do whatever you like. So that's not what should happen anymore.
So along the same thread of timelines, when did Owensboro Health become involved in this conversation?
The issue was wrong.
Well, whenever we started.
It was last November when they filed the application for a conditional use.
So that's been a good law.
Yes, it was in November. It's been almost a year.
I've got an application in three.
Because from my perspective, I was, I'm not going to speak for the council. I was kind of blindsided when we had a local attorney show up to our last meeting, like with some intimidating factors, I will say. Just presentation, just, you know, okay, so here we are trying to find the best solutions for our community. It gives all impressions that this, a lot of underworkings before it got to us. And then we have an attorney come from Louisville. And then as if it's an emergent issue that needs to be dealt with now. So I just asked for the timeline.
Maybe I can.
Okay.
Maybe you have to.
And who are you?
I'm Dick Kavanaugh. I work at Ohio County Water and Garden.
I talked to you the other day.
Yes, correct.
Didn't know who it was.
I'm Grant of the Board of Zoning and Cavanaugh. I've been in business in Hartford since 1986. We've been there for 38 years now. As far as the timeline goes, I'm okay with saying, my dad was contacted a little over a year ago about a piece of property he had that someone was interested in purchasing. That we didn't know who it was, didn't know anything about it. Wanted to know if he'd be interested in selling it. And I said, sure, I'll take this for it, you know, if you want to buy it. Broker came back, said, yeah, my client will have it. We had no idea who it was, didn't care who it was. But they said, they take it. Okay, so we go along, few months after that, we figured, we heard it's Bob's going to build there. You know, so we were like, okay, it's a big asset. It's great. Few months go by, we figure that it's Owensboro Health wants to build there. It's fine. So as far as the timeline goes, a little over a year ago, maybe, is when that happened. And I will say this, I'll say this how I'm, why I'm kind of here or whatever. So I'll just say, I'm not for Ohio County, but I'm for Ohio County. I'm for Owensboro Health. I know a lot of people in Ohio County, friends. It's out for Ohio County and Hartford. Hartford specifically, because that's where our business is then. We've seen businesses come and go in Hartford, a lot of them. A lot of them have gone down the street. And I think we've all seen cities around us grow. I think, this is what I do think, that it is a good opportunity for Hartford to start a little progression, to start, I mean, if you deny someone a business in there just because you think that it's going to hurt another business. You know, like I said, we've been in business for 38 years now. We've been, a lot of the competitions come in. We've got, we've got Agri going. We've got a new Ace Hardware down the street from us. You know, and competition can be a good thing. Competition means, hey, we need to figure out maybe something, offer something that they don't. Let's try to set us a partner there. Could be a good thing for the people in county. I'm going to say money-wise, the people in Hartford, tax money for businesses coming But that's how I fit into it. I just think it's great off the train for Hartford. And I think it's a dead core progression for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to follow up and say, I'm so sorry that you felt that my discussion last time was intimidating.
It was more so just a presence, like this came from nowhere.
And let me give you a little color on that, too.
Please.
So when we did file the application for conditional use permit for Nancy, I worked with Nancy and spoke with Tara a number of times, and that was last fall. And once we identified the fact that Nancy could no longer process our CTP application like she has previous uses before, very similar uses in the same manner that were treated as B3 conditional use permits, all of a sudden, it was brought to our attention that our application was no longer allowed to move forward. So through the next few months, we talked about text amendment potential for that. And with that, you know, I attended the planning commission public hearing. I attended Beaver Dam city council meeting, attended this city council meeting. So I'm just following the process, watching the process. And, you know, people might look at me as I'm crazy because I do land use and zoning stuff across the state, and that's what I practice. And it's, you know, it usually puts people to sleep when they haven't signed, you know. So, so I, the reason I'm standing up, and I'm sorry you felt intimidated, but there's been a history to this. And I didn't just plop down here just to come to this city council meeting for one specific reason. I'm following through on the cycle of these text amendments as it relates to both Beaver Dam and Hartford. And I'm here again tonight just observing, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council.
Okay, thank you.
And Stacia, I'll, I'll piggyback on that because I don't want somebody to feel like if this was being hammered through on behalf of Owensboro Health. These are text amendments we have been discussing for the last several years with planning and zoning. When it came to my intention about the conditional use, which is after we'd already been filed because Owensboro already has a location in Beaver Dam, so they just went through the same process they had prior. And somebody had said, wait a minute, I don't read it this way. They called me. It was actually a separate member on the board who called me. And I said, well, that's, that's correct how you're interpreting it. I said, what's happening? And then they explained. So when I called Nancy, we got some clarification. So as to the urgency of getting all these text amendments now, it's twofold. Number one, she was in the process of getting new training. And the gentleman who did the training, and this is what he does as a day job, he offered to draft the text amendments. And number two, we had this conditional use permit that now we're like, oh, we can't have any new business in B3 that's along these natures because it's been incorrect. So it was also because we knew that that was a pending real estate transaction. So we said, hey, can we just go ahead and get all this done now instead of having to piecemeal it like we have in the past? So that's one of the reasons that, from a planning and zoning standpoint, that's why you're seeing all this now.
I think it was very gracious for, to give us time to train before they come back and what it is. Because that was, that was a long period of time to get all my, all my group trained. So you know that your people are trained now, that's good. But it was in the 11th month, I think, 11th June of last year that I took the application.
Well, it's, maybe timing just stinks. And maybe I'm just a layperson. But it gives all appearances, this was specifically lined out for one medical organization.
That's exactly.
I mean, why not Traver Clinic? Why not Jenny Stewart? Why, you know, but we're looking at Owensboro Health. So it seems intricately carved and that we're the last ones to know.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to say that with Stacia as well because reviewing the current, or the current plans that we have now versus what's proposed, the only things that I can see that has been added or changed is the health clinic.
That's the problem.
Yep.
It's not, it's not the only thing.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I see. And there's some others. I had some highlights and notes here as well that are others. But we're talking right now about the, about the health clinic and that. And Nick, by all means, we did not know, or I did not know, I may be late to the game like Stacia here, that we didn't know it was your property that was, or your family's property that was being sold. So I do not want to say that I'm blocking a sale or a transaction from, from your family because that's, I'm not. I think, I think Nancy, you probably had an opportunity before our first reading, before you proposed this, that you could have filled this in maybe with.
But I wasn't doing it for a specific thing. I was doing it to clear up problems so everybody knew what the clinic and what's the hospital, inpatient outpatient. We have those, I have those over and over, and that's my problem. That's why I'm trying to fix them.
Well, that's, that's how we perceive it. You had an opportunity. I feel like you had an opportunity to say, this is a change that could have.
I would have if we had done a conditional use. Everybody had been notified, and everybody surrounding that area would also. But we didn't have one.
But it's still public.
I'm not going out and I don't tell somebody selling their property. I don't tell, you know, certain specifics that are coming in.
But here's the thing, though, you had an opportunity to tell us that there is an application that's been filed for, not to sell on the Kavanaugh's property, but you had an opportunity to sell, to tell us that, you know, these, this is a condition why we want to change the ordinance.
Well, just like we said, I didn't feel that way. I never, I have never spoken to Mr. Kavanaugh, that family in that way so that I could not interfere or tell something that wasn't my best place to tell.
Right, man.
I didn't ask you to do that. I asked you to, you had an opportunity to tell us that there was a business that needed a zoning change. And same with you, Mr. John, that whenever you came last time, you talked about zoning and the ordinance and stuff like that, that you represented at Owensboro. I don't think, and I don't remember that you said that, you know, your client was interested in building a facility here. So that's why it kind of, it left us maybe a little intimidated or a little confused, probably. or a little confused probably on why you were actually here. Because why would you, why would you have a, an interest in chaining Hartford and Beaverdam ordinance if you didn't know your client was wanting to build here? We didn't know that.
No, we didn't.
We, I think.
We didn't rezone.
I think, I'm sorry, what?
We didn't rezone. We only changed them.
Okay. However term you want to use, okay? But I feel like that we found out all the details after the meeting. And that was because citizens called us. We talked amongst each other to find out what's going on. And so that's why we kind of felt intimidated, maybe confused during your last visit. And, you know, and I, I have lost sleep over this because I want to do the right thing for the citizens of Hartford. You know, like Nick said, you know, Ace Hardware moved in. Well, you know, that kind of bothered me a little bit because of your business, of cause of agro grow, of cause of, you know, Hartford building and supply, you know? But yet I've also come to terms that Ace Hardware is maybe open whenever you guys and these other guys aren't. So if you have, you know, there's different, and they sell different items too. So, you know, there, I've kind of come to, same with Five Star come in. Hartford has gas stations, convenience stores already. But yet they're open again whenever, and provide different services or different options for the citizens. And that's what I want to do too. I want to leave out, like I said, any, I feel like if there's any personal gain here on anybody on the council or anybody here, I hope you don't have a personal gain other than Nick and his family, and you're working for him. I hope none of this change in this ordinance is a personal gain for anybody that's worked this, you know? Because I think you're coming to this with different motives than what's right for the citizens of Hartford and Beaverdam. I, I did, I went through this multiple times. You can see my paper, I got it highlighted, I got notes, you know? So as of right now for the zoning and stuff, I just, like, like I said, I feel like we were caught off guard and maybe not all the details were brought to us. And, you know, and I want to say, I really want to be loyal to Ohio County Hospital. You know, I know they've been in business for 55 years because I was born there, you know? And so, but I also want to say, I think the citizens need an option as well. One thing I would like to say too, there's multiple healthcare clinics. You know, you can Google healthcare clinics, and hundreds, there's hundreds of options, you know? So if Owensboro does pass and Owensboro wants to build a clinic, I hope it's not an abortion clinic because, you know, that goes against my, you know, core beliefs and my values. So I would hope that they would be a little bit more specific on what they want to bring into Ohio County.
Yes, oh yeah.
Thanks. But, you know what I'm saying? And so I think there's some other, like the terms, there's 90 some, there's 90 plus terms and definitions that, that are on, on this Exhibit A. I only found that there was only four with changes. I don't see that they were big changes, you know? A few wordings, I added a few sentences and that stuff. The signs, I will, since I'm, I guess I got the floor, my five minutes is enough here. I'd like to talk about the Exhibit C, about the signs. And I read it, and there was a bunch of changes. That was pretty much revamped. But the, the big, the big one that I see, and I have a question about, is on Exhibit C, page three, prohibited signs in all zones. And it's item I, billboards with electric messages, display system. So we have one of those currently in Beaverdam. And it's nearby Murphy's gas station across from the middle school. So what happens if we adopt this new? What happens to that?
I can explain that really quick. That's all wrong Kitty Brown or Kitty Bikes' property, and that's not. The one that's down there is not in the city limits.
Okay.
But it's also grandfathered in.
Grandfathered in.
And you can't, you can't revoke a zoning, something that's already there.
Okay, great.
But we do have sections in there, in our city, and people don't, they don't see it.
Couple of years ago. It's been several years now.
Those areas, and one went past the bridge coming this way.
It's been a little bit.
That also.
I don't reach that.
And they can do it what they want to.
They only enter the highway and whatever.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, okay, well, appreciate that.
And all the signage information, that's over my head right now too. And I'm really going to have to study it because of a law that changed. And that's the reason that we had Mr. Moore to do it because it was so complicated. He didn't really.
Yeah, and it's pretty in-depth right now compared to what we had in, it's current. I will say that. So Mayor, I think that's all my comments.
I appreciate it, thank you, Jeff.
Would there have been the same, and maybe this is already answered, would there have been the same zoning changes if not approached by a business or someone had not? I mean, would this, I know things needed to be updated, and there needed to be new zoning, and we have discussed that. However, would this been worded in such a way if there was not a specific business in mind?
You have in, in the different sections all over there, it has human care. It has, you know, different terms like that, and it all needs to be one. Because, yeah, there's a lot of different things that are business and different things like that, and they'll call it human care, and they'll call it a clinic, or they'll call it, all those different things. And what I have, and I handed him, the reason I'm going, I could put down a health facility and cover all the things too. I can change the name of it, become a clinic. But the fact is, that all came down, outpatient and inpatient.
I think what.
Could do different.
I think what Stacia is asking is the specific changes on Exhibit B, the business districts. Have, would, would Sean have proposed the same changes had the Owensboro Health application?
Right, yes, thank you.
I have nothing to talk about.
Huh?
So he didn't have any information on the Owensboro?
He doesn't know other than that I said I was having a problem determining, because I was not supposed to do a conditional use for it, what am I going to do? And he said, you need to clarify this, you've got little things everywhere, so that's.
So what he gave you had nothing to do with anything that was pending?
Yeah, to get a, to get a term, that was correct. The term in the book itself was not correct because we had too many of them. Call it healthcare.
So prior to all of this, all right, let's backtrack because I've read and reread, read old copies and new copies, and still confused. So prior to this, what could have come in that property? I guess that's easy, it's like, anything, or, I mean, what was its zone for? Like what business could have come in there?
Could a hotel been put there?
No, you're saying what could come into business? We have B3, okay? And you can look at that, and it needs to be updated because we don't have a B2. And B1 is way down, and then you have something at Courthouse. Other than that, it's all business. So I've had to work around that with the sizes a lot. You want businesses in, I had to see that they would fit and was not anything that absolutely was not permitted in the city. Because everybody's saying, we need growth. And I was saying, I want that piece over there, I'd like to see that something on there or something, you know? So you've got to work to involve everybody to get businesses in. And a nice new building is good. Right now, some places in Beaverdam, I want them to come in, and I held them off a little while because of the problem. You all got copies of the application the last time that I was here. I asked, I asked the attorney if I could give them to you. I did not give them to you without his permission because that was theirs for the, for the.
It was public record that had been filed with you.
When it's, when it's pending for a business location and a site is everything, that is not actually a public record, that is a specific.
Oh, really?
So I do feel like needs to get some, I want to talk, complaints here that she was just abiding by the law.
I need to be, I need not to tell everything because I need to be able to wait until it's something that I can tell. Because if somebody else in business wants to come in, and if it's permitted, I need to help get it in without, well, then persons will say, well, now they're going to put one right by me.
Well, tell me something. If, if only a few select people knew about this. How come I've been hearing for months that Owensboro is wanting to get their foot in the door?
I didn't tell it.
Well, it had to come from somebody, and only the select few.
Well, I got a call from the fiscal board whenever I was working on it, so.
And you didn't tell anything?
I didn't tell, I just said, I understand, and that's all I talked to. And I can't make adjustments. I'm not making adjustments on exactly who can go where.
Well, that's not a judgment. You had an application, you knew about something. And I'm telling you that the general public knows a whole lot more than most of us even do, and they should have been involved all along.
What you're hearing, you think it's all correct, then you knew.
Now, this is close for that, Nancy. Don't, look, I know how many times I've heard about it. And I've heard about it kind of with Kavanaugh, which didn't make any difference, Frank. I don't care. I mean, I, I don't have a dog in that race as far as them selling their property. But I heard about this way back in the spring. Now, don't.
Spring, okay, I said I took the application in 11th of 2011.
I'm telling you, the word was out, and it got out somehow, and there were only a select few of you who knew about it.
It was discussed in a public meeting with planning and zoning.
That just happened, what, in June?
No, it, John, when did that happen, back in February?
I'm not aware of that meeting. I was present at the June meeting.
Yeah, the June meeting is.
I think, wasn't there some discussion about conditional use permit or about something that got denied or something at that June meeting? Because, because of.
I think during the time of the training, there were questions about.
Okay, maybe that was, that may, okay, I can't remember exactly.
When we were having our training, because we're going to get it straight now. I'm going to ask your questions. I don't know. You won't? I, I don't have.
I will add this, if you don't care.
Tell them.
That the property too, literally joins the health department, which is zone medical. It, it joins a property that's medical, and it's directly across the street from T D.
Thank you for all the words, man.
Okay, I'd say now, everybody's a little patient there. And actually joins someone, a piece of property that is zone medical already.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Shelley Rowe. I'm on the board of the hospital, and I have been for 20 some odd years. It's been that long. I think there's more than one thing going on. And I certainly understand that the language in more zoning ordinances needs to be clear. I recognize that. But also, as Nick pointed out, competition can be a very good thing. But when you are going to give the same services at the same hours with a fairly limited population to draw from as customers, and no ability to change your rates because those are not determined by us. So we can't say, well, we have competition, so we're going to, we're going to charge less and hope that we can serve our community better. We don't have that option. I think that we are here because we are concerned about the health of the hospital in terms of years from now, and for our customers, and for the owners of our hospital, which are our customers. So we have some concerns about that because, as Shelley pointed out, it's not as though it's a dialysis department that we don't offer, that we cannot offer. It's an exact duplication of the services that we already have. So we're going to stress the ability to staff our hospital, which is already a major challenge, perhaps the number one challenge that we have. And then we're going to be fighting for customers. So I just think that as you all make your long-term plan, you know, at the hospital, we have to make one, three, five, and multi-year plans, and then reassess those as things change. I hope that you will consider the history of our hospital and where we are now compared to where we were many years ago, and what it takes to have longevity to serve our community. We try to be an integral part in the schools, in the businesses, in the community, and bring services here that we have not had for many years. It hasn't always been easy, they are not always profitable. But the service to the community has been around. So we are concerned that if we have duplicate service and duplicate hours, that it will be detrimental to our well-being as a provider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, John.
John.
John, I have a question. Do you, do you know the rationale, I guess, as to why your client would want to come here when there's literally a duplication and it practically in its backyard? I mean, is there any?
I need to be frank with you, I've not spoken on the operations of medical services on a zoning attorney, so I don't get into the weeds with that. I mean, I know Ohio County Hospital, they have facilities in Davies County. So medical services are expanding. I mean, there's a number of medical service providers in Jefferson County that have gone to secondary, tertiary counties to provide services. You know, and not to agree, competition can be good too because sometimes, you know, you want to keep those services at good quality, and that forces that. Because there's options that if certain people are not getting the quality of services they want in one place, they can go somewhere else. But I, to answer your question, I've not spoken about specifics with Owensboro Health. They tell me what properties they're looking at, what communities, using analysis for them.
Gotcha.
And talk them about the zoning laws.
So I've got a question. You said that, you said that they went through the zoning process already, and I heard you say Beaverdam and Hartford. Did I hear that right, that y'all have a site in Beaverdam as well that y'all are looking at? Or did I hear that right?
Well, what I've said is I've participated in council meetings at Beaverdam. I've just got, just gone to observe based on these proposed text changes. Facility that they might have in Beaverdam was existing before.
All right, thank you.
That conversation.
All right, thank you. All right, does anybody else have anything else?
I don't. Mayor Baskin.
Okay, all right.
I would like to know how many of these changes are a result of changes legislature made this year.
I don't know, just the signage is all I need, that was the legal change.
Well, and that's not just this year, that's based on.
Yeah, it's a lower time.
And I feel like I was.
I couldn't feel like I was falling into that signage change.
Let me tell you something, I haven't even read signage. You want to talk about the rest of this word for word, I can do it. But not signage. Now, I'm not interested in signage. I'm interested in why and how this is coming about. And I've heard all the explanations, and.
I think your question is why, why is it now, the ordinance has not had an overhaul basically since 1991?
One now.
I know, we did one when I was there, it's, it's had an overhaul. It has, Nancy, several times. It did when Nick White.
The, the mobile homes, for manufactured homes, that's correct.
So, but anyway, let's not, you know, these, there are multitudes of changes in here that I just wanted to know if they were all because of the legislature and what they might have done this year. Would it have been of two years ago? Did they make any changes there?
I don't think we took anything for a change by the law.
So in other words, the signage is the only thing that's been required by state law. That's all I want to know.
And then I know what.
Okay, but I think, I would hope you'd know the rest there.
Well, only if it's something that I just worked with P R S 100.
Well, okay. This next one. Under the business districts, we have quite an introductory statement here. And as I said the last time in the meeting, and if any of you can't hear me, let me know. I can talk flatter, or I can go softer, but I'm furlatter. There's quite an introductory to this business districts article. There's quite an introductory to this business districts article. And I'd like to know when and why and who came up with all of these changes that occurred in this. And what I am particularly talking about, Nancy, and I appreciate the job you have and I know it's hard and you don't get much but grief even from me, but when it comes to the fact that they want you and/or the commission, and I'm not really clear on which version, one says you, one says you and the commission, one says the commission, I've got three versions, remember, I've got, I kept it all. That you all make, shall make the decision concerning points of access off of a major highway. Now, they're talking when there are two or three driveways going into the major highway. In this case, we have seven driveways. And even though not every citizen may be a major, major citizen, their citizen is the city. There are seven driveways there in a short distance, and I'm not good with distances, I'm a woman, but I'd say less than 150 yards, probably less than that in distance from State Farm, or Farm Bureau down to where the apartments come into. And I personally, Nancy, if I were in your position, I would not want that responsibility laid on my shoulders or the commission's because that is a city decision to be made, not going to be made by the commission and/or you.
Mayor Bill, I'm going to interject, since we adopted a joint planning commission, you did.
I'm sorry?
Since the city has adopted a joint planning commission, you actually did allocate, delegate that decision to the joint.
Then it needs to be changed back.
We can't.
Why not?
Once you adopt it, you're stuck with it.
Let's change, we need another change.
You, you can't.
Why can't I? Is that in the state statute?
Yes, it's an all or nothing.
Well, then, fine, is it talking about ancillary roads where she can make the decision on whether there shall be or shall not be when she has no voice in the city operation and maintenance.
Because the city decided to do a joint planning commission and had delegated all those decisions to the planning commission. You can't pick and choose which portion of the planning.
That is a new statement in here.
Okay, a commission in its entirety, though.
Yeah, it's mission in its entirety.
No, the commission.
I'll tell you, I never, I don't do that, if it's a big places like that with that many stuff, I make them have me a statement from the State Department that because it's on a state highway, they are the ones that decide where entrances are. I don't do that. I always, I get most of my stuff, I'll have them prove to me that they went through the State Department to get a big plan or anything, but I just told this gentleman also that I would also have to have that and they provided those things.
But if there's a new development plan, the commission may say, hey, you're going to put in a shopping mall here, we want an access road built.
I understand that, I understand that.
They are off the highway, one entrance and then they share.
I know that.
And they have to keep that up. So, that's what you do. I don't do, I don't tell anybody that, you know, anybody has been saying, well, you need to step through the state.
Well, then I wouldn't want to sit here, Nancy, because do you realize what could fall on the top of your head one day?
I'm not, that's why I said, I make sure they get through the State Department because who needs to do that themselves, me saying, oh, you're going to have, you can have two, you can only have three, well, now. But we can't talk about it in a meeting and see if someone has suggestions or things that probably.
Well, we won't, I'm not, I'm, I've worked to have a discussion then.
Yeah, I haven't too, I'm just saying, if you can't get it, and I can't get it, that's been approved through the state, then I'm just going to not do that.
All right, let's go on to my next question. Why do consumer services versus personal services require so much attention in this document? Tell me the difference between those and why and where and when.
I've got a whole lot of what we've been trying to simplify.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think that's a lot of what we were thinking of simplifying, if you have consumer services, that's your business. You know, that would be Walmart or something, that's a consumer service. And we're talking the other as what now?
Personal.
Personal, sometimes I would consider that to be more solid.
So, are you doing away with one or both or?
Well, if it's a business, that's what I work with. I work with those businesses and residential, that's what I work with. I'm working, you know, deciding what you consider in a business, it's commercial, it's a business.
So, a business can't be a personal service business?
Well, if it can, that's why I said, some of it, it doesn't need to be repeated twice. There are different things through there and we're going to keep going through this so that we can simplify most everything.
So, you want to take out personal services or change it to consumer services?
That's what we'll have to discuss, I will have to discuss, you know, on the board because we're going to look at it again.
So.
I took out personal services, I think that's what it was.
You took out personal services, it's scratched through like Tara talked about earlier, and consumer services have been added. So, but now you're saying you need to talk to your board before we can make a decision on this?
I don't know, okay, tell me which page you looked that up.
Exhibit B, page two.
Was that in the terms?
It's in the permitted uses.
Yes.
It's under the V1, central business district V1, page two. Was that on him already?
Yeah.
Consumer services under sale of any service for individual customers for their own personal benefit, so that enjoyment, convenience, and personal benefits, it's a business.
Personal services.
It's consumer service.
It's consumer.
All right, so what's personal services then?
I would say it's the same thing to me.
It's the what? It's the same thing?
No, I wouldn't.
Well, I think consumer is business. So, if it's a business and you want to have a personal, you want to go there for your personal reasons, it's still a consumer service.
Personal services, that's my personal paper.
Well, if you're going to.
It's not a consumer.
Probably go buy something.
I'm not buying anything.
But you're still not answering, or I'm not following, I'm not catching it.
I'm not either, I'm totally confused on this.
I, I would assume a personal service is something like a beauty salon or something like that.
Like a beauty salon.
It's got more beauty shots already in there.
Right, so I guess maybe whatever.
You can look it up. Personal services like a.
It's not a destination.
Like a what?
Beauty salon.
I guess that's been in that for years.
Right.
And to the city.
Right.
Well, it's in there, you can say the places are your business. Whether they, I think.
Perk repair.
Or. Work on it. It's still consumer services.
And then, under neighborhoods, you are given the option under number it or under S in the permitted uses. Other uses is determined by the administrative officers, official, which are similar in use to the permitted sites.
Well, I think that, sorry, I think that might reflect back on what Tara just said on, basically, we adopted that and that's why.
That's in there?
Mm-hmm.
Mark Allen, that's terrible. Okay. What are roadside stands? This is under conditional uses.
Your, your references to roadside stands are usually, we have agricultural, the city's don't really have that much, what we call the farm, which is five acres or very far down. If you want to, if you want to come in and ask, say, I want that changed over, I want this to be a farm, you can't even request it since it's not a farm at that time unless you have five acres, that's for the ordinance.
I think the, I think the standard definition of roadside stand though would be like when somebody sets up to sell their vegetables or some melons or something on the highway.
Those, the little trucks are going to have to put them to you and get a conditional use.
They're not permanent unless you put a permanent structure there, otherwise it's temporary.
So, the permitted uses in this district.
You still in V1?
Huh?
Are you still in V1, because I'm really mad.
I'm talking. Well, yeah, I am, I forget that. The roadside is down.
Page six, G.
Page six, yeah, that's what I thought. Roadside stands and clubs including, these are the conditional uses. What's a roadside stand? Is that like between here and Owensboro, it makes?
It's your persons that come out here and they want to put up and sell vegetables and it's temporary, that's what I, you can consider that, you also have the, sometimes you will have a firework, a temporary tents that go up, they're not permanent. So, that's also just, that's what you need to consider in that, and that's about all you have here as far as the roadside stand, because we don't have farms that absolutely are, you know, putting out, so they can do quite a lot of farming.
Well, why did, why did you not say philanthropic institutions or quarters?
Well, whenever you go back to that, that sometimes to me is like your.
I'm sorry?
It's sort of like your, your places like the wellness center, it's still a service. I was trying to get all of the things to service, you know, so you don't have to, anything like that I would consider a service and it's a business.
It, it does include a club in which the chief activity is traditionally carried on as a business, so that would include a philanthropic venture.
I have no idea what you said, Tara, I'm sorry.
No, repeat it to me now.
The full thing says roadside stands and clubs, including a club in which the chief activity is, is carried on as a business, so that would include nonprofit philanthropic type businesses that carry on business activities.
But it's mentioned everywhere else in that reg.
They're kind of joined together, you know, different things like that.
What'd you say? I can't hear you all, I'm like, I'm sorry, my hearing aids are dead. I can't.
Do you have anything else?
Wait a minute, I've got a couple more.
The philanthropies and all that.
Say what?
When you're taking that, you're looking for what it was.
I like that, I figured I was going to get this. Is there a definition of a sanatorium?
Yes.
And, or is it just supposed to be lumped with a hospital? That's lumped with hospitals? No.
That's what, we put together, that isn't, it's not like you have a commercial.
I know what a sanatorium is.
Well, then it's kind of a hospital.
It's an inpatient.
Yes, inpatients, how many of them do we have in Ohio County?
It's inpatient, so it would.
I'm sorry?
It's inpatient, so that falls under conditional use.
I, I didn't ask that, I said, how many do we have in Ohio County?
I don't know many, do you?
Not presently.
Do you have any in the state of Kentucky?
A nursing home like that is not a sanatorium.
I'm not talking, I'm talking a sanatorium.
Yes, we have several.
Do we have a sanatorium in the state of Kentucky?
Yes, we have several.
Yeah, they really don't refer to them as sanatoriums anymore.
It's an archaic term, but yes.
Yeah, they're like mental.
They are mental hospitals, which is overnight, that's true, but it's not referring to closed down tuberculosis like she said.
Well, I just, I ain't giving you any crap.
I know about western state and eastern state and all of that.
It's an archaic term, but it's the same, same thing.
That's why it's better to have an inpatient and outpatient because that does separate them.
Now, that is confusing on that.
Well, no, I'm trying to make it clear.
I'll tell you what, and supporting what Stacia and Jeff said earlier, I'm out, it's being brought to us. One of the comments I had to make is that I really cannot figure out if this is overkill or loophole. Now, I'm sorry, it's either going to cause something, loop or it's overkill.
These were updates, not just to one thing, you know.
Well, you know, there's just, just, just so many things that, that have changed. You want to know about your spelling mistakes and all that? I mean, I'd go over that with you too. I tried to limit it because I know everybody doesn't want to sit here and listen to me.
Before I talk to you all, and then, and the final, then I'll go.
All right. When are we going to get?
Just talk to me.
Wait a minute, let me ask my question. When will we get the absolute final document?
Mayor Bill, this is the first, you're in between the first and second reading, so anything that you see that are spelling.
This isn't a reading.
No, you had first reading, you're in between the first and second, so any spelling mistakes?
How come I've got three copies that say three different things?
This is the only thing that's been presented, is what's in your packet, is what was in the first reading.
No, she gave me two.
She gave you what, she was, she gave you all that as a courtesy to talk about. The only thing before the council is in what's in your packet and you can correct spelling mistakes between the first and the second reading, if you'll point that out.
Remember, I said I was giving you a rough draft for you to get started looking at the first time, before I brought one where you just start looking at the votes or something like that. So, I thought I did as well as you now.
All right, thank you.
You probably did.
Thank you, everybody, and I'm gonna, I'm going to say this to the public, I appreciate everybody, Nancy, I know you've got a hard job, I appreciate you, John, coming in, Nick, I appreciate Ohio County Health. Everybody, everybody is wanting the better for the county as well as the city of Hartford and these are challenging times for us and I appreciate the council as well. If anybody else don't have anything else, I would like to have a motion to adjourn this meeting. Well, we've got our first district magistrate, Michael McKenna here, I appreciate you coming in, if you, you have anything to say.
I don't really need to add tonight, I just want to thank the councils for taking all of this under advisement and working to do their due diligence to make the right ideas happen for your community because this is my community, which I oversees first district magistrates and the parties involved here, there's a lot of controversy, but not.
And I don't want to digress and I know we're working for adjournment, can you give us any insight on whether fiscal courts, knowledge of this or stance on or anything?
I got some of my first knowledge from.
Okay, okay, can you elaborate, Michael?
I've, I've shared no information about the, what I can tell you from the fiscal court. We were, we were under the impression that Davis County, where we're helping, looked at some property, we weren't even aware of where the property was, the hospital had made the knowledge, made us be aware of that. I know that there was a letter sent asking them, and I'm going to use the wrong terminology here for media purposes, but to cease and desist as far as, we wanted to support our county hospital and I was, I was willing to sign that letter. I'm not trying to keep Nick, which is a good friend of mine, his family from selling property, I'm not, there was no, we didn't have an idea of what was going on at the time.
So, there was efforts from the fiscal court to make this not?
We, we sent a letter asking them not to come in to, to do the same services that we already provide.
Okay.
I would like, I mean, I would like to see, I mean, Mr. Empero made mention that 55 years ago he was born here, well, 50 years ago I was and we no longer can, or babies here unless it's an emergency. And I mean, there are other things that Davis County or Owensboro Health may be able to help us offer more services to our community. I'm not giving you any specifics, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I was trying to support my hospital, which we helped the bonding ability for them to make our surgical center be a reality. And I felt like as a newly elected official, I needed to support the hospital because it's a great facility. I have family members that have already used it and I, I mean, I think that it's a great facility. I would like to see us have more options as far as the other things that we could treat or the other things that we could have people be able to. or the other things that we could have people be able to go to, get their healthcare needs here that maybe our hospital doesn't already offer. But I'm not the one making those decisions. And like I said, I mean, I'm not wanting to keep someone from buying property, or I'm coming here tonight because I wanna see how you all were approaching this because this is a really big deal. I know some of the struggles that you all have in front of you. I called Bo almost a year ago about something that I knew was gonna happen when there was some of the properties sold, and there was something moving, and I can see the tax hit that this community would take. And that's very concerning to me because I know on the county level, we're not gonna lose it, but on the city level, you are. And this is my city, and this is where I, I need to try to help take care of, so that's why.
Yep, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was not aware there had been any letter to anybody about resisting, you know, not doing that or anything. I just worked in planning and zoning only, and that's what I went through, although I've stayed in my lane. I have not talked it out, and, but I did need everything, it was a good, good time to get things updated if we needed it, so we're trying to work with that. And you just probably need to check with your attorney as to whether you can just not do it, you know, or whether you can do it legally, what's gonna happen if you don't change things, what we can understand that goes under conditional use and what goes under this program.
Well, thank you for all your work. I mean, it's not gone unnoticed. I know we're kind of putting you under the spotlight, but it's not gone unnoticed. I wouldn't want your job either.
I will say that Beaver Dam has a, also, they received everything the same time the way you did, but they've also, they went ahead and they approved the signage because they knew that I needed it, I told them I did because of election coming up. So they did go ahead and just take a say on that.
Okay, thank you. Just so the public knows, there won't be no action on this topic at the October 19th meeting, or I'm September, September, the special call meetings, September the 19th at 5:00. This, this will be a topic again in October if it, if we come to an agreement and we still need to make some corrections on the readings there, so. With that being said, I do appreciate everybody, and I hope you all have a blessed day. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I have a first by Stacia, second by Coleman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.